Recording right now.
Okay, I guess you guys have an update for town meeting?
Cordell there? Hey Cordell, okay. Would you want to address them Cordell? Would you want me to?
I'd be happy to. Okay, well when we last talked, I updated you on what we had heard from the state, which was nothing. And that is still the situation. I won't say we haven't heard anything. I'll say we haven't gotten any action. And I don't know when we will. So Joe and I have been talking about this alternative proposal, which I think works. I think it's legal. And I think it, the plan is it will comply or probably over comply with all guidelines that we've seen relative to COVID-19. So the proposal is if we, and Joe please jump in at any time. But the proposal is that we go forward with the meeting on June 6th at the school. But rather than having the meeting in a cafeteria, we have people gather in individual rooms in groups of nine or less. So that complies with the, my suggestion is that to minimize voter interaction and crowding at the entrance, we would have voters enter through, at a building through three separate entrances based on where their names fall in the A to F, G to M and Z, something like that. So voters show up, they check in with a ballot clerk who is seated more than, who's seated at least 10 feet away
Hey Cordell.
Check-in table.
Cordell.
Voter checks in, up an envelope containing a voting card. Yep.
Hey Cordell, can you maybe shut off your video?
Do you not hear me?
You're breaking up.
You can maybe shut off your video just to give us the audio presentation.
Yes.
You're all coming across horrible.
Okay.
Last thing we heard.
Okay, is that any better?
Yeah, that's better.
Much better.
Much better? The last thing you heard was?
A through something.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so people check in at one of three entrances based on where their names fall in the alphabet. So that would significantly reduce congestion at the entrances and we would have, you know, tapes on the ground or signs or whatever to keep people apart while they're waiting to check in. But they shouldn't have a long wait. So the voter checks in at a table. There's a ballot clerk seated 10 feet away from the table. Voter checks in, the clerk checks the person's name off on the checklist. The person's an envelope that contains a voting card, the written ballots, a copy of the warrant, and a copy of the rules for the meeting. And then goes to one of a number of rooms that have been designated. There are a lot of logistics that Joe and I and the people at the school went over today. But basically, they would be directed to a room and each room, each room would have not more than nine people in the room. We would need a number of assistant moderators. I'm thinking about 20. Because we want one in each room. So we would actually have eight voters plus the assistant moderator in each room. Checking my notes here. Non-voting members of the public would also be permitted to attend and they'd be counted toward the nine-person limit in each room. People will be asked to wear masks and expected to maintain appropriate social distance in each room. The rooms are, the rooms are plenty big enough that you could have nine people in the room and easily have, in most cases, 10 feet between everybody. Some cases maybe not quite 10, but well over six feet. Let's see. So then the selectmen and Joe and I, the town clerk and probably Russ would be in, I think we decided, in the library. And the meeting would be livestreamed from there to each room. Each room has a projector. So people can see and hear the people who are talking.
And it would be livestream internally. It wouldn't be outside of the school. So somebody at home would not be able to access or watch what's going on. It would only be internally within the school. So it's a closed network.
Is that, is that something we want to entertain to maybe try and keep the crowd down at town meeting?
Livestream it beyond the building?
Yep.
How are we, how are you going to register them?
Well, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying they can necessarily participate in the voting, but at least they can observe. If it fits Facebook or just somebody's phone or whatever, just.
It's worth thinking about. I don't, I don't have a strong opinion on that.
So.
I'm just trying to manage, I just don't, I, well, I think just the layout alone is going to keep the crowd down. But the more, open it up, the more diverse or the more diffused everybody will be, I think.
Well, I guess, what is our, our goal? Are we going through all 30-plus warrant articles? Or is our main objective here trying to get that operating budget?
Well, and again, that's up to you. But my suggestion, I think the goal would be to get through as much as you can. I don't think, I think if the meeting, I don't think a five-hour meeting is a good idea.
Correct.
I think a one-hour meeting would be a great idea. And I don't know whether we, we could set a limit and say after one hour or two hours or whatever, we're going to recess the meeting until a later date. Or not.
This, you know, I understand the idea and the concept. But to me, this doesn't seem functional. Like it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem possible, really.
What about it?
I think there's so many different aspects here. It seems, how do I want to put it? It is definitely not our normal town meeting. I think you're going to lose a bunch of people. I know the operating budget is our, our main concern right now. Like if we could go for the operating budget, recess the meeting, we know that eventually the governor probably will lift the 10-person limit here. And then reconvene in another location that allows us to social distance, such as the New England College ice rink. So we can have those conversations.
Tia, I do.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I do have this on the agenda for Tuesday night as well. So the board can kind of decide what they do want to move forward with and what they don't. What, what's the priority of what we, what the board wants to put out there? You know, obviously the operating budget is a big piece of it. So at least this way, the board can kind of dictate how we want to move forward. You know, I think it's important to let the public know if we're only voting on certain articles, which ones we are going to be going forward with. So that everybody knows. So if somebody isn't showing up thinking they're going to be voting on the bond for wastewater if we're not going to hear bonds.
Right.
You know, things like that. So that's, so I do have this on the agenda for Tuesday night. I think, you know, for tonight, this was more just a logistical piece of how it was going to play out to make sure everybody was good with it. If that makes sense.
Yeah, and if, if the selectmen decide that you just want to get through the operating budget and call it a day, you can do that. I guess I would suggest there are a couple other things that you probably really want to do. First is the highway block grant article, which no one would ever argue about that. I think you probably want to adopt the, but the operating budgets for the water and wastewater as well and for the library.
And the libraries rolled up, you know, that would all be considered operating. So I know there's separate warrant articles, but at the same time, that's all operating.
Right. So I think those, you would want to do those things and they probably, they probably don't generate a whole lot of debate.
I think I saw, when I was looking at the warrant, I think I saw about 15 of the warrant articles are pretty mechanical and should be pretty non-controversial. Joe, I can't remember what your answer was, but can we, can we rearrange the warrant articles on Tuesday? So that we start with the least controversial and then this way we at least get 18, maybe 15 to 20 of them out of the way before we start getting into Vietnam.
We, we can move the warrant around. It's going to be done by motions on Saturday. So people will be making motions to rearrange the numbering. But that can happen. I mean, to me, it's, it's basically, you know, with Cordell and I are talking, is really to come down with that order of importance. What do we really need? The operating budgets and kind of start with the order on what we have to get through. And then from there, the board can decide how they want to proceed. But yes, we can move them all around.
So Lori Marco has a question. I'm, Lori, I'm going to unmute you if that's okay.
I'm muted.
I'm trying to, Joe, can you unmute her?
Sure. She's got herself muted, so she's going to have to.
Okay.
There we go.
Sorry. I just have a quick question. We're talking about putting everybody into separate rooms and everything, but we're having those three entrances that need to be, unquote, secured to keep the integrity of the voting. What, how do those people that are at the entrances get to participate in the meeting if they're at the entrance and not in a room?
So the thought that Cordell and I kind of had was at a cutoff point, we're going to push everybody to one door. So we're going to ask people obviously to be there by 12:30 so that we can make this happen. And then at that main door, you're going to, you're going to have other people who are available. Because it's going to be right outside where the selectmen are, where I am, where Russ is, where Kim is. So we can kind of filter that up to where they need to be so that the people, the check, the people on the checklist and the ballot clerks are able to go to the room that they need to go to.
When someone walks in later, you guys are going to check them in?
Well, there will be, there will be somebody who can, who can see them and come out and check them in. What we would do is at, at 1:15, direct everybody, anyone who comes in after that to go through the, what I guess is called the flagpole entrance, which goes right, when you go through there, you come right to the library, I believe.
That's correct.
Which is where, which is where we'll be.
Yeah, but that's still, that hallway is still, like if you let them in that entrance, they're still going to be able to wander around or go into other spaces without checking in.
No, we, I'm pretty sure we can arrange it so that we can see people coming in and go out and make sure that they're checked in.
So you're going to, get some, somebody, designate somebody to be a ballot clerk that's sitting in that room with you to do this?
I, I would say we, we could have, we have the library and then there's a room off the library. And we can have people, we can have people in that room. We would have the ballot clerk outside. And when someone, someone comes to check in, they check them in. If there is, if there is no one, when there, when there's action to be taken or when the ballot clerk wants to participate, that person can signal us in the library. There are going to be several of us in there, five selectmen, not all of whom are dealing with that particular article. And they can come out and check the person in.
Going back to one of Tia's comments, this is not going to be a normal town meeting. It's going to have to be changed, juggled up. It's going to have to be just the best job that we can do. And I don't think it makes much difference how big an area we have it in. I think this sounds like a reasonable alternative. But I think that we need to make sure, the other comment I'd make, rather than not announcing that the whole agenda is important, I think we ought to rearrange by, as Joe says, have a, have a motion ready for the start of the meeting to rearrange the articles so that we prioritize them and get the things that are either simple or really important. Both come into play early in the agenda. And I think we ought to see if we can make this work and then plow through as much of the agenda as we can get through. And I wouldn't limit it to an hour. Hell, we've had town meetings that went for five hours. I'd rather not do that, but.
No five hours. I think you got a tension span of an hour and a half to two hours, max.
I agree, yeah.
But I said, go for it. I think it's been a well-thought-out plan from Joe and Cordell. Obviously, there's going to be some glitches, but if we're all fleet of foot, I think we can adapt on the fly. And we got to get this thing done. Did I mention we should have done it on March 14th?
Yeah, you mentioned that on March 14th.
You beat me to it. The other question, Cordell, how are you going to count votes?
Thank you.
The idea would be to have an assistant moderator in each room. When, when I call for a vote, people will hold up their voting cards exactly as they do at a regular town meeting. And the assistant moderator will count them and let, and let me know what the vote was in that room.
And is that going to happen through the chat? So we have a, a record of it coming through the system?
As I understand it, that's how it would work, yeah.
So just so basically, the way it will be set up is the IT from the school is setting up the chat for us. And each warrant will have its own chat. So we'll have a record for each warrant broken right down. So once we have closed that warrant, we can move on to the next chat. They'll have it all separated out. And then the rooms will already be labeled as well. So we know who's talking to us from each, you know, if it's room 224, let's say. It'll come right up and be already labeled and ready to go.
Are we going to ask for everyone to wear a mask? Yes. We're going to ask for everyone to wear a mask. I don't think we can prohibit people from participating if they don't wear a mask. But we're going to ask, we're going to ask people to. And for those people who, who are not willing to wear a mask, we will ask, we will ask those people to congregate in one room or one or two rooms or whatever. So that people who want masks and don't want to be with people without masks don't have to be.
Joe, can we make sure we have masks available if people forget?
I have, I have already put in order and have masks for everybody, yep.
How many policemen are we going to have? We usually have two, one or two. I don't know. Go ahead, Joe.
I say, Chief French knows about this and knows about the plan. I haven't asked him for a number of officers yet. I mean, if we normally have two or whatever people think we need. He's aware of the plan and what's happening though.
I think you better plan on at least one for each entrance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's not a bad idea.
How many clerks do you have in your corral, Lori?
Oh, she's muted.
She's muted.
There you go.
I have about eight. And then the three supervisors. And I can't guarantee that those ballot clerks will, will volunteer to do this.
Lori, if, if we come up with other volunteers, could you, could you accept other volunteers to work as ballot clerks?
They have to be sworn in before town meeting.
Right. But this is not, this is not like an election that's extremely complicated and they have all kinds of processes they need to know. They just need to basically check someone off the checklist and, and tell them to take their envelope.
Correct. But when you do your ballot voting, well, you've got your assistant moderator, so you might be, you'll probably get it covered there. I'm just trying to go through in my head all the, the legal issues that we might come up against.
Yeah, the ballot voting, I would, I think that could be handled by the assistant moderators.
Since, Cordell, since there is such small groups, wouldn't it be wise just to put them in an envelope, not even count them in those rooms and deliver them to where the board of selectmen is for counting? To make sure that nobody can be identified?
That's exactly right.
Yeah, we could do that. That's, that's fine.
I just, you know, having these small groups, there's, you know, it's more visible on how people are voting.
Yep. That, yeah, that's fine. And I mean, I assume there won't be a whole lot of ballot votes. So if we need, need to do that a couple of times, sure.
So Joe, can we make sure that we have, you know, manila envelopes for each room?
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's even easier. I was, I was thinking of having a box for each room, but manila envelope is fine.
Joe, how many ballot votes do we have? Two? Three?
Well.
Anybody can call for one.
And, yeah, but it depends if we move forward with the bonds. That's going to be the real question. If we don't, if we, you know, if we do a motion to, to wait on the bonds, then we only have, if anybody asks for one and it passes.
Right. And we have to keep in mind, if we do the bonds, what do we have to do? Keep it open for one hour, Cordell?
Yes.
And we can't move forward with any other ballot votes until that is closed?
Legally, you can. Legally, you can.
Correct. We can.
Yes.
You just can't, you can't close the voting.
You can't close the vote. Right.
In several meetings, we've gone on to other things and then come back when they, you can't, you can't start a second ballot vote.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Well, in theory, you can. You might not want to, but, but legally, you could start a second ballot vote.
You just can't close the first one.
Right. You would need to record, you know, we, we opened the polls on the first one at 1:15. So that has to stay open until 2:15. And then we opened the polls on the second one at 1:49. So that one has to stay open until 2:49.
So here's my, oh, go ahead.
I was, I was just going to say, and again, this is a policy decision for you. But obviously, the, the fewer ballot votes we have, the easier it's going to be.
The other question I have is how are we going to be dealing with like cleaning of the restrooms if people need to utilize those?
It will be, they'll be disinfected right before we start. I asked, I asked to make sure that there, that all the soap dispensers were filled and there was plenty of paper towel. I think, I don't think disinfecting them between each use is, is possible. But if they're, they're disinfected at the beginning and people can wash and dry their hands, I think, to me, that seems reasonable.
I know some locations that have opened up, you know, clean there is like every 30 minutes. That's something maybe we can ask the school?
We, yeah, we might be, we might be able to do that, yeah.
Lori, yes, the classrooms are all going to be on the second floor. Answer your question.
Other questions?
No, I say we go for it. Put Joe in charge of rounding up enough volunteers to be, so we can supplant the ballot clerks to help Lori out.
Sure.
Lori, do you think you're, you would have more of an issue because of the demographics of your crew or what?
That, yeah, it's, they're all older people that are going to be very nervous about being in public and not having hand sanitizer right there with them and being able to, I mean, we still have, we have the 10 feet, but they're still going to be very nervous.
Yep.
We, we should be able to make hand sanitizer available to everybody, shouldn't we?
Yeah, we can have hand sanitizer.
I mean, to all the ballot clerks. And, and, and they don't, they don't need to touch anything other than the checklist and the pen that they're holding.
Well, we need to, but we do need to see their ID.
Show ID for town meeting.
Cordell, can you repeat that? You broke up again.
There, there's no photo ID requirement for town meeting.
Okay.
Put them through the checklist when they check in and get the package.
So our thoughts, Leon, just so you know, is we'll have the packs already put out there. And we're going to already have the room numbers and assignments. So when they pick up their, their packet, they have a card that tells them exactly where to go. We would take those eight people all at the same time up to the room so that the assistant moderator can actually show them like where the bathrooms are, where the exits are. Because a lot of them aren't going to be, know the school. They may not know where on the second level to find a bathroom if they need it. So this way, acting almost as a tour guide to bring them up, we'll take those eight people at the same time right up to their room. And that's how we'll keep track of it is with those index cards. So I'll say like room 224, number one, 224, number two, all the way through eight. And then the next room will go on. the next room will go on.
Joe, so as we're checking people in, are we going to be asking them questions on if they have symptoms or checking temperatures when they come in?
We, we can. I mean, I've planned on having signs posted. If you have any, any of these symptoms, please don't come in. I mean, I hadn't, I, I have thermometers. We can do temperature checks if, if I, if we can. I don't know if, can we legally, Cordell?
I would, I would have reservations about that.
Employers have...
I have to go through one.
I know, but, uh, that's an employer situation. This is a, this is a town meeting situation. Someone's...
Yeah, but we're also under a state of emergency.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that we could force people not to vote. That wouldn't work.
Cordell will get back to us on that one.
I, I would, I'll get, okay, I, I can get back to you, but I would be, I'd be nervous about saying, "You can't, you can't attend town meeting until we take your temperature."
Joe, do we know how many people have been identified as affected in our town?
Five.
Five, yes.
Do we know what their demographics are?
We do not. We have nobody active right now in town, I can tell you that.
I was going to say, they're all recovered, right?
Correct. We have no active cases.
That we know of.
Correct.
I mean, there's no way that we're going to be able to do this town meeting with zero risk. I mean, there's just, I mean, life in general is, has risk associated with it. But I think that we've taken enough steps here to mitigate as much as we possibly can. I say that we go for it because, uh, the window of opportunity is presented itself.
And one of the plans, too, is to actually, we're going to figure, we're going to list the eight or the nine people that are in each room. Just in the event anybody were to ever test positive for contract case, uh, testing and, and tracking, we'll know who was in the room with them. Um, is the plan as well.
So, our list will show who's in what room, then?
Correct. Yep.
Sounds like the school's doing quite a bit for us.
They're helping us a lot. Yep.
Oh, Lori wants to be unmuted, Joe.
Sure. And Peter just came in as well, just so you know.
Lori, then, Mike.
Um, what happens if we have a family that comes in that wants to be together in one room?
Right.
And, uh, we, we exceeded the, the limits on that room. Do we give that, I mean...
We would give them another room.
Okay, so you would open up a separate room?
Correct. Yep.
And we, these rooms are already going to be...
So...
Set up, or?
Yep. We, so, we, we have the possibility of 34 classrooms that we can use. Um, we're starting with the top 17, which are all on the second floor, um, just for logistics to keep things together. They're also the biggest rooms, and they deal with the older kids, so the chairs are larger. We don't want to put people in the kindergarten where the chairs are tiny. Um, so, we're, we're starting with the eighth grade, eighth grade classrooms and going down. Um, so, logistically, it won't be a big deal for us to be able to put them in another room and then just finish filling that room and just move on. So...
We've got the capacity, like, 272 participants.
We do. And some, and some of the rooms, in the event, let, let's say we are running short of ballot clerks, um, or assistant moderators for volunteers, some of the rooms are adjoining, and we'd be able to share that moderator if we needed to, to manage both rooms, because they're right next to each other, and they have doors that open and close into each other. We prefer not to, but that is an option if we need it.
If I identify who the, uh, the moderators, or the, the other moderators?
No, we, uh, I think, I think you, uh, came in late. We need, we need to recruit some assistant moderators. Um, and those would be people, people who would be likely to attend town meeting anyway and are willing to volunteer. So, if you have, if you have ideas, um, please, I, I think you can go ahead and ask people, and we'll start making the list.
Well, should they be filling out the application form, Joe?
Probably be the easiest. Yep. I'll put it right on the front page of the town's website, so people can find it nice and easy. Um, and then if they need you, they can reach out to me, and I can get it to them as well. Um, so if people are listening and they want to volunteer, we welcome it.
Mike French has a question.
Yeah, I, I think that this is a really well-thought-out plan, and with the additional thoughts that have come out here tonight, I strongly urge you to go ahead with it. I also urge you to prioritize in, in, according to importance rather than ease. I think it's more important to get the important stuff done first. And finally, I'd be happy to volunteer for whatever position you'd like me to work on. I'd be happy to be a mod, one of the room moderators, or if Lori needs some additional help, uh, on the ballot clerk end, I could do that, too. Whatever, whatever you think's best. And I'll, I'll fill out one of those forms.
Thanks, Mike.
And I'm going to say goodbye. Got some watering to do. Nice to see you all.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Michael.
So, what are you looking for on this? You looking for a formal motion to move forward with this, or just consensus? Or what do you, what do you got?
Well, we're going to, aren't we going to be bringing it up again on Tuesday to gratify everything?
So, this is just for information only?
Well, I, I guess, we, we wanted, I wanted to know whether you thought this was a workable plan, and, you know, if five of you said, "No, this is crazy," then I wouldn't, then I would not pursue it. But if, if you're thinking that this is worth going forward with, then, yeah, that's what we'll do. And, and I, and I do encourage you, well, obviously, on Tuesday, you're going to spend some time going over the warrant and figuring out what, how you want to handle that. Uh, I'm sorry. One, one thing I would say, just a little thing, but it'll help a lot, is, um, when you go through the warrant articles, and I know you usually do this anyway, um, or you do part of this, um, identify someone, one of you who will move the article and one of you who will second it.
Well, and I still have the list from the last time, Cordell, so, um, I'll make sure that everybody knows what they're doing, because it's been a while.
Yeah. If, if we can get a motion and a second, and that way, you don't, you don't even have to actually say, "I move," and I second. I will say, "Chris Blombek moves and Leon Parker, Parker seconds," or "Tia Hooper moves and Peter, Peter Flynn seconds," whatever. That will be...
Chris Blombek, you hear me?
I do.
I also think we need to, um...
Go ahead, Cordell.
Oh, I, I also think we need to, uh, dispense with any long presentations...
Yes.
...to the extent we can.
I predict...
Go ahead, Peter.
I didn't mean to step on you, Cordell. Sorry. I thought you were finished.
That's okay.
I, I, I'm well aware of this whole plan, even though I jumped in about five or eight minutes ago. Uh, I, I did talk to Joe today, and I, I got a rundown of pretty much everything that you, you probably discussed so far. But I think what Cordell would like to hear tonight is a consensus that we would probably be moving with this plan, and we'd be spending Tuesday night mostly on the warrant articles.
I concur. I would make that consensus agenda that we would move this forward.
Thank you.
This plan forward.
Okay.
I think we're talking about having a lot of confusion, because it's different than what we've done before. I don't think the confusion doing this will be any worse than the confusion doing any of the other alternatives we've talked about. So, I think we ought to move forward.
Yep, I, I agree. Thank you, Leon.
Scott, where are you at?
Yeah, I'm for it.
Tia?
Well, we kind of don't have a choice, but, you know, we got to be cognizant about how much time, and if we do have to continue the meeting, then we need to be open for that as well.
Yep, we agree.
And Leon, you're good?
Well...
Okay, so I think you got your marching orders.
Good.
And we'll just, we'll talk about more logistics and what we need to do on Tuesday.
Yes, and that's your regular 6:15 time on Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we need, we need to make sure that communication does go out. I know we use Facebook a lot and newsletters and stuff like that, but we need to make sure that residents somehow get the information, either in their mailbox or some way distributed to them, um, so they understand what's going on.
So, I've already reached out to the papers. We're already running an ad to make sure people know that we have the, uh, town meeting still on for June 6th. Uh, the Kennick Community School, I've reached out to Matt Kobe as well. He's going to be putting it on their bulletin boards.
Is there any way, Joe, we can get something like in the, in the mail? I know sometimes the post office will allow you to...
I can, I can definitely look into it. Yep. Yep, definitely.
Okay, good. We're going to meet on Tuesday, 6:15. Any other questions?
And just if people are looking to volunteer, I've already put it up on the website, so it's on the front page. The link you can click. And if you're looking to help out, it'd either be a ballot clerk or an assistant moderator to help Cordell out, uh, just click it and fill out the application, and I'll get it.
I think I see Lori Marco filling out the application for Bill right now.
Don't tell him, though.
If, if he doesn't, if, if Lori doesn't, I will.
All right. Anything else?
I'm good.
All right. Joe, anything else for us while we're here?
No, sir.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for attending. Cordell, thank you, and Joe, thank you for guys putting your heads together and coming up with a viable game plan.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Is Tuesday night Zoom or in person?
What's that, Leon?
Is Tuesday night's meeting going to be a Zoom meeting or in person?
So, Tuesday night's meeting, we still cannot have the public, but if the board wants to be together, the board can be together. We have the community center ready to go. Our town hall streams is hooked up in there. I can link the town hall streams to Zoom, so however we want to move forward with it.
Let's meet on person.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, and before we close it out, is there any members of the audience that want to address anything that we talked about? Anybody seeing anything on the chat side?
No.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Leon, seconded by Tia. Roll call vote. Chris, yes.
Tia, yes.
Leon, yes.
Peter, yes.
Scott, yes.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Stay cool.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Cordell.
Take care, guys.